So you're in the right place if you are expecting to be joining an approved provider list service specific webinar for supported living. My name's Shirley Miles, I am hosting a little bit of housekeeping. We have been recorded, we've got use of the chat and the Q and A functions today for questions, there's loads of time for questions. We are here to answer all of your questions. If they don't get answered as we move through the session this afternoon, we are updating frequently asked questions and sharing those weekly. If there's anything that is still being worked out in terms of some of the detail of the contract, they'll be responded to following the session, you will have access to those as well. So feel free to ask questions, we'll do our very best to answer. I'm going to hand over, we've got just the team to introduce themselves. Jonathan, do you want to go first? We'll just see who's on.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. My name's Jonathan Prince. I think from the names I've seen coming through in the chat, I've met quite a few people who are on the call before, but I am a Service Development Manager for Support Housing at North Yorkshire County Council.
Thanks very much, Hannah.
Hi, yeah, like Jonny, I recognise a few familiar names on the call, so welcome. My name's Hannah, I work in the Service Development Team at North Yorkshire County Council. I have a craven locality portfolio, but I'm also quite heavily involved in the APL reprocurement work. Nice to see you all.
Thanks, Hannah.
Hi, Julie Toomey, Quality and Governance of South Yorkshire County Council. Again, recognise most of you from Care Connected as well. So nice to see you this afternoon.
Thanks, Julie. So yeah, Go For Growth is working in partnership with North Yorkshire County Council, making sure that the process side of the procurement is running smoothly and that you get the support that you need. I'm going to hand over to Hannah, who's going to take us through what we're covering and get into the detail of the session. Thanks, Hannah.
That's great, thanks, Shirley. So yeah, I'll just start with some introductory slides, let you know what we'll be covering today, and then just touch on some of the overarching key principles of the APL reprocurement. For those of you that are current providers, it'll be sort of touching on some of the high level changes that we're introducing as part of this reprocurement. And for any new providers on the call, they'll kind of cover what are the key principles and what we're trying to achieve through this reprocurement. And then I'll hand over to Jonny for the finer details of supported living and Julie to cover quality pathway and PAMs. So what we're covering today, those key overarching changes to the new approved provider lists, the key changes and our principles of the new supported living service specification, and some of the key high level contract terms for supported living. As I say, Julie will give you a brief introduction on the quality pathway and PAMs system, which we're introducing as part of this reprocurement as well. And then Shirley Lee will just finish us off by covering some of the other support that's available through Go For Growth and otherwise as part of this reprocurement. This session today is part of a programme of support. So we've hosted two webinars already, looking at two of the other service specifications and lists that we're covering and reprocuring as part of the approved provider list reprocurement. And we've got a final session coming up later this week covering community based support. So I will just note before I move on that I think there might be some people on this call that have attended one or more of those previous sessions. The first half of the session is a rerun, so we're running those overarching contract changes and the PAMs and quality pathway information at each of the service specific webinars, just recognising that some people will focus their business on one service area. So apologies to any of you that are hearing that for the second or even third time. And then Jonny will speak more specifically about the supported living service specification and contract terms. And then as Shirley Lee says, we'll finish off with a Q and A. Just pop me on to the next slide, Shirley. Okay, so just this slide, Apologies is very busy and we'll go out after the session, but it's just setting the scene really. So hopefully you're here and you're already aware that we're reprocuring the approved provider list for adult social care at the moment. So our current approved provider list for adult social care come to an end on the 31st of October this year. And we're provisionally looking to publish this new opportunity, which will be to join the new approved provider list at the beginning of June. So we're looking that the opportunity will go live at the beginning of June. And then those new contracts under the terms of the new approved provider list will come into effect from the 1st of November. So for those of you that are on our current approved provider list, you'll know that an approved provider list is a pre-approved list of providers that cover a defined set of services. And we've got four defined service areas as part of this reprocurement. An approval onto those approved provider list does not offer any guarantee of work at that point. The sourcing of work through the approved provider list follows our council brokerage process, which will form part of the procurement documents. So in order to join the new approved provider list and be considered for new packages of care from the 1st of November, providers will be required to submit an application to demonstrate that you meet the minimum required standards. And this will include a quality assessment and a submission of a price for your services. There is just a note at the bottom of these slides that whilst we are currently, whilst today's session focuses on the reprocurement of the new approved provider list and how to join and what features will be from the 1st of November, providers can still join the current approved provider list because they run until the 31st of October. And the existing application process for that does apply. And there's some links that you can click on within these slides once they're circulated after today's session. So just move on to the next slide. Great, okay. So this slide just covers what we see as some of the overarching changes to the reprocurement of the approved provider list this time. So I'll just run through those with you this afternoon. So as part of the reprocurement of the new approved provider list this time, we will be introducing four lists. So we've currently got three lists, there'll be four lists from the 1st of November. And we've redefined some of the service categories and definitions as part of the reprocurement work. So there'll be a list for residential and nursing services, a list for community based support services that covers all services delivered out and about, away from the home, in the community, be that one-to-one support out and about in the community, maybe to access some mainstream activities, or be it daycare and day service type activities out of a person's home. All those services will be commissioned via the community based support list. We've then got a list for home based support services that will now include all services that are delivered within a person's home. Living care and non-regulated services will feature on that home based support list. And then we're introducing a new list and a new service description specifically focused on supported living services, which is the focus of today's webinar. All of those four service areas have got redefined and rewritten service descriptions. So you'll see some key changes in those. There's a real focus this time on enablement and reability approaches within everything we do. So we're always trying to make sure that we promote and develop people's independence and maintain it where appropriate, that we're not just keeping people safe. We've got that real ambition for enablement and reability across all the services we're commissioning. We've also included a focus on technology enabled care. So looking at innovation and working together with providers to always consider digital solutions for people where appropriate that can really support and develop their independence. So that's embedded and sort of a key theme throughout the new service descriptions. And then we've also included the discharge to assess process and timescales within the service descriptions this time, just recognising that they have evolved significantly throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. So you'll see those featuring all four of the service descriptions as well. We've then introduced a new standards and outcomes framework, which applies across all of the four service areas. That standards and outcomes framework is based on a template that was developed and agreed by the East of England region. And we've adopted that to meet the requirements and needs of North Yorkshire. NICE guidelines are embedded and entwined throughout that standards and outcomes framework. So where appropriate, there's direct links to NICE guidance throughout. And we've also made the links there to the Think Local, Act Personal, Making It Real, I and We statements in terms of what we expect to see for people's individual outcomes through receiving the services we're commissioning. There's also some contractual and payment terms changes that we've introduced as part of these approved provider lists. I'll just summarise the high level changes here and Jonny will come on to talk about some of the particulars in relation to supported living. So if you just move me back, Shirley, sorry. Okay, so as part of the application, as I touched on on the last slide, you will complete a quality and pricing evaluation at the point of application. And then in terms of costing models and payment terms, we're introducing hours per week contracts as part of this approved provider list, which gives that little bit of additional flexibility, both for providers and people receiving services in terms of how those hours are used to best meet a person's needs throughout the week. We've standardised notice periods, so they are more meaningful and fair. And Jonny will come on to that in the next couple of slides. We've standardised definitions around planned and unplanned absences. We've got some ambiguity and inconsistency around that at the moment. So we've standardised the definitions around that. And we're also including in the contract some improved guidance around consistent recording of actual delivery. We've got some variance at the moment in terms of how actual services delivered are recorded versus contracted services. So we've just included some additional guidance within the contract that's hopefully helpful to providers when submitting those returns to us. And then as I've touched on at the beginning, we will be introducing a new quality pathway as part of this approved provider list reprocurement. And we'll also be introducing the PAMs system, which is a regional system, which Julie will touch on as part of this session. Just move on to the next slide, Shirley. Okay, so I'm not going to talk through this slide in too much detail, it's very busy. But as I say, it will be shared after the session, but it was really just good to give you that initial view of the standards and outcomes framework, recognising that that is a new introduction as part of the approved provider list. So what you can see there is the high level domains down the left hand side, involvement and information, personalised care and support, safeguarding and safety, suitability of service provider personnel and quality of management. And then each of those outcome domains has a set of standards against it. And those standards then have a set of core criteria. So you can drill down from the domains into those really specific core criteria that we are expecting to see throughout all services commissioned through this approved provider list. And as we say, it's all linked to NICE guidance. We've taken a template based on a regional agreement in the East of England. So there should be no surprises here for you as providers delivering good quality services in North Yorkshire. But it's quite a significant addition to this reprocurement from the last round of commissioning for approved provider lists in North Yorkshire. So I'll pause there, Shirley, if there's any specific questions to these slides. But if they're more generic, happy to leave them to the Q and A session and hand over to Jonny.
Looks like one that might be quite straightforward and then one that you might want to pick up, Hannah.
Okay.
So can you confirm extra care services will fall under supported living?
So no, extra care services won't fall under supported living. So extra care services in terms of the housing are commissioned on a separate framework. Jonny, I don't know if you want to pick up here and then the personal care is through the home based support, but do you want to pick that up?
Yeah, no, no, I think you've sort of summarised that quite well. So this is only applicable for sort of supported living as we have defined it, which I will come on to in a minute. And there's more information that will come out about that in the future. But no, extra care in terms of the traditional extra care schemes that we have commissioned within North Yorkshire at the moment, the care for that will be commissioned through the approved provider list for home based services. So hopefully that clears our hope.
Thanks, Jonny. Hannah, there's another question that is asking for advice, perhaps you can pick that one up as Jonny picks up his slides.
Okay, that's great. I'll have a look.
Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, I'm just going to take you through some of those key principles and changes that we've put into the delivery model for supported living. So as Hannah has mentioned, this is a brand new service specification, which is specifically for the care and support functions within supported living. So it doesn't cover the housing element of supported living. But what it does cover is both regulated and non-regulated services. Because we know at the moment for support living services within North Yorkshire, we've got a range of activities that go on within them. So purely for that care and support section, and it's a new approved provider list, but it is sort of very much based on some of those principles that we had from the old domiciliary care approved provider list that we had before. And so within this approved provider list, we have defined what supported living is. We haven't put the definition on here because it will probably take up half a slide within itself. But that will obviously be shared when we go out, but it's very much sort of what you would expect. It's a housing model, it's people living within their own home who are receiving sort of a substantial amount of care as part of their support package and also probably receiving some housing related support as well with that. So we have a strengthening of expectations for the services to be provided within what we call the ethos of supported living. And there's lots of information out there about the ethos of supported living. But we've sort of bullet pointed some of those key bits in there. So having services that are integrated within the community and very well placed based so that people feel that they are part of their community and in their own home as any other people would be. And we want services that are building on people's strengths, skills and independence. And as Hannah has just pointed out, that's focusing as well on that ablement and reability approach. And really key and sort of underlining this for supported living is helping people to live their lives how they want and giving them choice and being able to help people to build and maintain relationships and making sure that they have as many opportunities available to them as possible. And yeah, and that fourth one, just to reiterate, giving people a chance to live in a home of their own and very much moving for these services away from kind of traditional more institutional services that we might have seen in the past. So the way that we've sort of split this out, that services will be split into core hours. Some people may currently refer to those as shared hours. And there will also be individual hours and there'll also be a sleep in element of the services. And all three of these will continue to be priced on an hourly rate. And actually, at the moment for sleep in services, we do that sort of block of hours that we pay for. But that will now be, we'll be asking for that to be priced on an hourly rate because we know that the number of hours that's covered in a sleep in shift varies from provider to provider and also from house to house. And we're asking that providers to ensure that they have clear agreements in place for the management of any jointly used items within supported living. So we know this has caused a number of issues over the years with things where there's jointly owned items such as cars, utilities and appliances. And what we're asking is that as part of this approved provider list, that there are crystal clear sort of agreements in place upon people moving in about who owns what and what happens when things need to be replaced, et cetera. And we're asking that providers ensure that they have appropriate agreements in place with housing providers as well to ensure that they work together effectively and that we don't have duplication in particular. We know at the moment that sometimes there's a little bit of a grey area when it comes to housing related support tasks. But all we are asking is as part of coming on to this approved provider list is for care and support providers to make sure that they have an appropriate agreement in place with the housing provider that they will be working with. And we've also developed, and further information will come out about this, more clear pathways into and out of supported living. And again, this is really about making sure that this is targeting to support the right sorts of people. And you know, if people have the opportunity to move on to something that allows them to be more independent or, you know, on the other end of the scale of those, the services can no longer sort of meet their care and support needs. We need to make sure there's a clear way in and out of those supported living services. And we've embedded that in this new approved provider list. And we're going on the next slide, please. And then just in terms of these key contractual terms that we are implementing here, I'll sort of refer to them as changes, but I know this is a new approved provider list. So this is sort of from scratch, but if I'm referring to changes, it's from the domiciliary care provider list that we run from at the moment. So as I mentioned before, the supported living APL will require providers to submit an hourly rate at the commencement of the list. And the hourly rates will again be submitted as they sort of are at the moment and having a basis of a generic rate and then a complex rate. We have defined within this, and this will be shared at a later point, what we mean by complex, just to make sure that there's no sort of ambiguity within that. And what we are doing similarly to the home base support, we're having prices that are required to be within 10% of what we have at the moment as a county wide average. And that's the average of new business at the moment. So it's not taking into consideration sort of historic rates. And if that rate isn't achieved by people's submissions, we'll be asking for a rationale behind that. And this is based on, yeah, delivery of support to people in a supported living environment. And again, as I said before, this will cover three elements. So there'll be core hours, individual support and sleep in support. And those core hours will be on a per property basis. And what we'll be doing is asking people upon application to the list to submit what those core hours are for each property. So the correct people are sort of referred into those. And there will be elements of flexibility around that as the list develops. But it just helps us with sort of the clarity over what type of service is being provided in each supported living because we acknowledge that there's a wide range within the county. And then one of the other big changes, just that last bullet point on there, in the event of a vacancy within the property, the care provider will continue to be paid for the core hours for six weeks, at which point either the payment will be ceased for an element of that core hours, depending on how many people it's split between. Or we will have a sort of a new bit to our sustainability process for providers to apply to for that payment to continue. So whilst the sustainability process is underway, that cost for the care void will continue to be paid for a maximum of 12 weeks or until the outcome of that application is known, whichever sooner. And if the void is filled within that initial weeks, then payments will cease. And I think the other bit that I just wanted to say on this is that we are really, really committed as a council to helping providers to fill any vacancies that they might have within any properties. We know that there is high demand for supported living services across the board. And we acknowledge that particularly within shared housing models, it is quite difficult sometimes to arrange compatibility factors between people who are sort of looking for properties and people who are already living there. But we're really keen to work with people to minimise the number of vacancies and voids that we have out there. And so hopefully that bullet point was sort of all clear, but you can kind of go back to read that if it needs to be. And then there's some changes that we've put in in terms of absences and notice periods as well, as Hannah has said. So if tenants do end up in hospital, we have committed within this approved provider list to pay 100% of their package for two weeks, 80% for three to six weeks and 50% from week seven up to a maximum of three months. And if there's any other absences, it'll be for a maximum of 14 days a year that it will be paid. But that will be core hours and not including the individual support. And then the last bit, just in terms of this, is the notice to end packages. So what we do know is that for supported living in particular, not least because of sort of tenancy factors and other things, a longer notice period is required. And that's to both sort of protect yourselves as providers and also ourselves as commissioners. So what we've changed that to is a 28 day notice for up to 10 individual contracts. Or probably more appropriately for this, up to 100 hours of care. And then three months for anything over those 10 contracts or over 100 hours of care. So hopefully that all made sense and we'll obviously pick up in the Q and A. But I think that was it for my slide, so I think I will hand over to Julie now.
There's a couple of questions that's came in. Are we picking those ones up just now before we move on?
Yeah, if that's okay, I'm going to keep.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I think you can probably pick that up, Jonny. Would you just have a quick look? And Neil, you've put a question in the chat. If you could just copy that into the Q and A. It just means that we can keep track of the questions and make sure that they get shared in the facts, if that's all right.
Yeah, I'll pick that one up and either we'll come back to it or I will write a direct response in there.
Perfect, thank you. Julie, you're up in that case, thank you.
Fabulous. Can we move on to the first slide then? I am going to apologise to those, there's quite a few people that's on the call that have been part of the previous two. So I am covering the exact same thing as that I have covered before. So yeah, I apologise for that. So the quality pathway that's been mentioned previously, basically the vision is for us to have a clear end to end process that drives quality in the market, enabling early intervention, provide support at the right time and have a consistent approach that enables good quality care. So we want to be able to identify risk and risk rate providers. And when I say that, it's risk rating providers, it's about allocating appropriate support. So it's where a provider may need that additional support, we can risk rate that and direct the support to where it needs to be. It was just something that came up in an earlier session and I just wanted to touch on that. It will, as I say, support complete early intervention. It's going to be a flexible, dynamic approach as well to quality assurance, something that we have learned from the pandemic, not just face to face, but those trusted assessments as well and some virtual support. We want to align our quality standards to support the CQC inspections as well as drive quality and best practice in the market. And I know that Hannah touched on earlier, the outcomes framework. And when I talk about PAMs a little bit later, you'll see that golden thread that runs through. Can I just have the next slide, please? And as I said, those trusted assessments, again, it's about that accountability and responsibility and giving you the tools as providers yourself to self-assess. So there will be an element where you can self-assess, as I say. And again, that is about us driving quality and that sustainability in the market and reducing provider failure and to work better together that we have done through the pandemic. Can I have the next slide? Okay, so this is just an overview of what the quality pathway currently looks like. So that blue route is your first year on the approved provider list. So it's from sign up. The green route is that ongoing until the APL ends. So you'll see the self-assessments in there and health checks around quality visits. And as I say, could be self-assessment, could be face to face visit or some virtual. The purple route is something that's new and it's going to be a pathway to outstanding. So where we have those good providers and want to get to that outstanding, that support is going to be there. And the amber route on your left hand side, everything filters into is all our different levels of intervention that we're going to offer through the quality pathway to our provider market. And there's four elements of that, which I'll touch on a little bit later. How are we going to gather all this information and make sure we're putting the support where it's needed? So we're developing a data and intelligence hub model. Currently, we get lots of information, lots of soft intelligence that comes in. We want to be able to streamline that and act on it as quick as possible. So that could be information coming from CQC, coming from feedback from services yourselves, service development. service development colleagues that are on the call just now and pulling all that information in and applying our resources where it is needed. Next slide please. So visual diagram, like I said earlier, there's different, different levels of intervention. So for example, you see level one, which is about advice and guidance. Again, that virtual information and we will have a suite of resources that we'll be able to share with providers. And again, our, our approach to quality could be through self assessment or dynamic monitoring in the market as well. And again, that continues, continuous improvement, for example, the pathway to outstanding. And on the other, other side, our level three intervention could be with our quality improvement officer, which a few people on the call might have had already received support. And it'll be intervention around practical support potential, that training offer as well. And even though, and that'll be for high risk. And again, it's about sustainable market and target improvement where it's needed. Early intervention to reduce provider failure as well. Can I have the next slide? So Provider Assessment Market Management Solution, PAMS. You're, you're going to start to hear a lot more about this as we move forward. I'll do some, some key focus sessions around the PAMS assessment and the quality pathway through Care Connected and other sessions. But I just wanted to touch on this just now. So this, this, this approach is our quality technological solution to quality assurance. Now, if you're a national provider, you may already have services that are using the PAMS system. It is, as Hannah mentioned earlier, Easter currently using it. And for North Yorkshire, along with 13 other local authorities have all signed up to this. So it's a regional procurement. The quality assurance, the PAMS quality assurance has five domains, again, linked back to that outcome framework that Hannah mentioned earlier. So it will support you, making sure you meet your contractual expectations through the approved provider list as well. I won't list them, but there is the 16 domains again that Hannah had mentioned. And there's going to be returns function in there as well and to hopefully enable us to streamline obtaining information from yourselves better. And there's a landscape tool that's within it as well. Again, that's about market intelligence. And the next slide. Handing over to you then. Thank you.
Thanks ever so much, Julie. We'll make sure the questions get answered before we close. But just a couple of slides on the information and resources that we're providing as Go For Growth. So these pre-recorded, sorry, these webinar sessions that we are making available. We've been working in partnership with North Yorkshire County Council to make sure that they are just being accessed really and making sure that the technical is combined with some of the process elements. So we've got some pre-recorded process webinars, just covering some of the basics really, how to actually use the portals, how to express interest, making sure you can access the right documents, understanding the application form itself. I know that the application for this is not necessarily finalised yet, but when it is, we'll be making sure that we do take people through step by step. Just some handy hints. So it's well worth having a look at the, the YouTube channel, Go For Growth YouTube channel. We'll make all these links available. We're on LinkedIn and sharing, just sharing these as widely as possible. If you've got colleagues that weren't able to join today, you can point them in the direction of some of these resources. The, the reason for capturing the Q and A is so that we can update the frequently asked questions and make sure that they get shared. And we've also got opportunities for you to ask process questions as we go along. So we're doing some one-to-one support sessions that are sort of pre-bookable. That's with my colleague Jill. Well worth finding, getting half an hour of her time if you have got process questions that are, that are holding you up. We've got drop in sessions as well on Zoom. You don't have to register. There's a fairly loose agenda usually around a theme, but lots of opportunity to ask more questions. We've got the dates there or we'll read them out there on the screen. And as I said at the start, we'll be sharing the presentations and the recordings with everybody that's on the call. And specification webinars, which is this one, we've got one more of those later on this week. So hopefully opportunities for you to feel as if you've been supported on the process side as well as well as on the detailed side from the team. Just going to pick up on the Q and As that have been added in. I don't know who wants to pick up.
I can, I can pick those, I can pick those up, I think it's okay. So, and so just to pick up on, well, I'll pick them up sort of bottom to top as I, as I can see them here. So Kim's just posted a question there, just around, if they want, if her organisation wants to provide support in the future, would they need to apply to be on the approved provider list? And the answer is yes. And, you know, other contracts, if, if you, if we're working with organisations who have other contracts with North Yorkshire County Council, this is sort of separate to that. So you would need to apply to be on the approved provider list. It's got its own sort of sets of terms and conditions and various other things. So we're more than happy to kind of talk any providers through that if they've got any queries around that. But I, I think, yes, you would need to, you would need to address that sort of separately. And there's been a couple of questions in just around what the standard rates are for supported living. And so there's, well, there's one around the standard rates. And I think Neil has also put one in, in the chat just around some of that methodology for working out those, those average rates. So the, the methodology, without going into sort of a massive amount of detail about it, was essentially using where we've, where we've got providers at the moment who are providing supported living services, using an average of what their rates would be for new business as we stand at the moment. But what, you know, what we have acknowledged is obviously we've got this sort of 10% window, which it, which is there for people to consider kind of upon application. And just in terms of what that, that sort of standard rate, so there's, there'll be a generic rate and there'll be a complex rate as well. And we'll, we'll be sharing that obviously when the, when the documentation goes out and when the, the window for, for this particular procurement exercise opens. So we're not sort of in a position to share that now, but it will be coming sort of imminently. And but there has been a lot of thought that has gone in around it. And, and just another sort of thing for, for people's consideration as well is that we did consider sort of a geographical based model for, for supported living and setting different rates on that basis. But when we looked at how the rates are set at the moment for supported living services, there wasn't a huge amount of difference geographically across North Yorkshire, which we, we took into consideration when we were thinking that we would just do one sort of rate across the county. So hopefully that clears that up. And Linda has also put in a question just around the share of sleep in hours being paid for along with the core hours. So I think if I've interpreted that question correctly, the, the answer is essentially that the, that sleep in hours would be sort of treated in the same way that the core hours would be because they are, they are a shared service. So we can provide some more sort of detail to that in, in sort of the written Q and A. But I'll make sure that that question is addressed on there. And so I think that was all of the questions that we had in there. Oh, and, and so Kim has also asked a question there just around annual inflationary increases as standard. So, and Hannah, I don't know if you've got the sort of the most up to date information about how we're addressing inflationary increases within the.
Probably going to divert it just to the FAQs, just because I don't want to give any misinformation. There's some real complexities around some of the inflation work. And it varies just slightly across the different list. And I just want to avoid giving any inaccurate information because I've been involved in, in all four. So Kim, if we pick that up on the FAQs, we'll make sure that that, that makes it onto that document.
And I think that was all of the questions that were on there, don't they? And only the thing that I was just going to mention, and that's not part of the, part of the question and answer, but it's just relevant for people who are supported living providers across the county. And is that we are very much sort of aware that kind of the care and support is only one factor within supported living. And actually, in order to successfully deliver a programme of supported living for the future, we, we need to kind of address how we, how we look at the housing side of things. So I'm in a, in a new team at the moment that is looking, and a new role that's looking specifically at supported housing and supported living across the county and it's very much sort of on our radar. So hopefully we'll be able to sort of work with yourselves going into the future to and sort of talk about the best ways of securing housing because it's a, it's a very hot topic sort of nationally as well. So just to kind of provide some of that reassurance for everyone.
John snuck in with a quick.
I've just noticed that in the chat there, Shirley, do you want me to pick that up? So John's question, Johnny, is in relation to legacy packages. And we've had this at a few of the other webinars as well, unsurprisingly. So the, the terms and conditions of the new contract will only apply to new ISCs that are issued from the first of November. So we're not, we're not, we're not imposing new contract terms on existing individual service contracts. So it's written into the current pre-purchasing agreement that your individual service contracts that were issued under the current PPA may exceed the lifetime of the PPA itself. So the PPA will come to an end on 31st of October, but we recognise that you will have a number of packages under, under ISCs that they won't terminate on 31st of October. They will continue to run and, and the current or what will be previous contract terms will apply at the point that that person needs a review or a reassessment and a new individual service contract is issued. That will be issued under the new contract terms. I think what we just acknowledged, and I think we've acknowledged it particularly on the home based support webinar as well, is as a local authority, we whole, wholeheartedly recognise that, that legacy packages is an issue. It's a resource intensive issue, both for the council and for, for you as providers in terms of reassessing those individuals to, to move forward from those legacy rates. So I think what we're doing at the moment is we're acknowledging that it's an issue and we're committed to finding a solution, but we don't quite have the solution with the right resource behind it to deal with those legacy packages at the moment. So hopefully that, that answers John's question.
Thanks Hannah.
No more have snuck in that I can see?
No, I think that's it. I mean, it's not the last chance to ask questions, as I say, drop in email. There'll be a couple of clarifications to questions that will follow. And we'll make sure everyone gets this information and all of the information about how to access ongoing support following this session. So unless anyone's got any last comments, I'll draw us to a close. Thank you ever so much for your time. Thanks, thanks panel. Thanks everyone for, for joining us. Have a good afternoon.
Thanks everyone.
Bye.
Thanks. Take care.